I'll call the June meeting in Huntington Township planning permission to work. Everybody have a chance to review the minutes of the May 24th meeting?
Yes, you made the change, right?
Yep.
And you sent it around?
It was, I sent it out immediately after with the change.
Okay.
Yep, so it should be good.
Any questions, any additions or corrections to the minutes? As presented. Hearing any, I'll entertain a motion to accept these minutes for record.
I'll make the motion, I'll second it.
Motion made tomorrow and second tomorrow, all who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, so moved. Next item with businesses, zoning officers.
All right. Let me get it up here once. I issued a building permit to Garmin Builders 122 Tammy Drive. That's for a new two-story, single-family dwelling. I issued a permit to, building permit for Seth Martin, 1568 Cranberry Road. It's a two-story addition to an existing house. Christine Barth, 6120 Old Harrisburg Road. A building permit for an eight-by-12 front porch addition. Got, wrote a waiver letter for David Boyer, 125 Trolley Road. He is removing and replacing roof shingles, which in our township is considered repair. Jacob Telecommunications. This is the cell tower on White Church Road. And they're swapping out antennas to update them. I issued a zoning permit to him for that. I don't know if anyone wants to climb up that tower and inspect what they work. As long as they stay there. And an occupation permit to Barry Richardson, 270 Peachland Idola Road. For thirty-seven rooftop solar panels that were installed. And then I accepted a conditional use application from from Steinhauer Holdings on that's for the sports complex building at 255 White Church Road. And if the original deal with LCDM fell through, if any of you saw the original ad for the project. Millers are selling a sports complex with an NPDS permit and so on and so forth. Well, their sports complex is not a sports complex. It's a building that was built for storage. They don't have the property perks. But they never followed through with their sewer permit and that expired. And the NPDS permit, which they got from the state, which they never did anything with. So the new owner has two choices.
Can I add one thing there?
Sure.
The NPDS permit is inconsistent with the township permit that was conditionally approved as well. Maybe you were going to say that, I just want to get that on the record.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Okay, go ahead.
Say that again.
Their NPDS permit is inconsistent
With the one they said
with the township permit that was conditionally approved.
Weren't they both from different plans?
Well
They are different plans, not from different ones. They are different.
The one was, was accepted from a plan that we did not approve, correct?
One you conditionally approved, but it was based on three conditions. One of those conditions was an NPDS, an approved NPDS permit. They actually got one, but it wasn't the same plan.
No, it was a different one.
Yeah, so they are not approved.
Right.
They didn't go back and consult, they didn't rectify the change.
Well, there's a consistency letter that
Yes, they never got.
has to be provided to the state and that was never provided.
Okay, good, go ahead. Because I don't even know if that's relevant.
Well
Probably isn't.
When the deal went south, one of the things that I think screwed it up was the fact that you have, they have a choice. You can transfer an NPDS permit, but then you're obligated to complete the permit that it calls for. So, nobody wanted to do that because it was supposed to have been done by the Millers. So that deal fell through. So now I have a new guy from Gettysburg. And I'll show you some pictures of his operation. He does those sliding doors when you go to Walmart that open up, banks, they open up. If they don't work, a business is out of business. So, this company distributes those doors and parts to Walmarts all over the United States. And in this area, they run a fleet of trucks to do service on them if they break down. And that gentleman is interested in buying the building. The acreage is what he's interested in terms of what's in front. The building is what he's interested in because it's fifteen thousand square feet. And he's working out out of one that's about forty-eight. And he has, what he has right now is down on Route 30 east of Gettysburg. That's Route 30 out here, you can see a sign. And then he has a building. He does have some walk-in trade comes in to get parts. This is part of his warehouse. He's got forty-eight hundred square feet, which includes the office, the warehouse, and the service department.
So, and what's the name I missed there?
Steinhauer Holdings.
I think it's O-U-E-Y-O-R.
It could be. Some of you might know, remember Dr. Steinhauer, who worked at an emergency room at Gettysburg Hospital. That's his cousin. They're his service vehicles.
So a lot large, they're like vans and stuff like that.
Yeah. Well, he does
He has to get deliveries, I'm sure.
Yeah, he gets tractor trailer deliveries.
Right. And this is the back of the building. And pallets and stuff that are being shipped in. Here's the rest of his warehouse. He has materials to manufacture the doors, they bolt them together. You gotta tell them what are right here.
Gus, I believe you said fifteen, fifteen hundred square feet, you believe on that building?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Were you able to pull that even up to me?
Sure, sure. And there's more of his trucks. But you notice that the black, the yard is blacktopped. Those guys come to work about seven-thirty and they're out of there, on the road by eight. And they're back in by four-thirty. He's concerned about the NPDS too. He came in Saturday to tell me that. I kinda said, well
Well, is he planning, is he planning to do more expand or something that he needs that permit for?
Well, the problem with the permit is, if he buys it and transfers a permit, then he has to finish it out.
Yeah.
Which is completing the stormwater for the building that's already up there.
But if he doesn't?
If he doesn't
Are they out of compliance then?
Then he has to get a new permit. And he'll have to do the same thing.
Okay.
I don't know how he can use the same permit.
You can transfer that, but then you're obligated to finish the terms of the permit.
Well, that, that wasn't a That NPDS wasn't a, wasn't a storage permit, built, um, plan. It was a sports complex plan.
Yeah, but basically it was a stormwater plan.
Yeah, it was a storm, it was a stormwater plan for five baseball fields and two buildings.
Yep.
Build around wetland. He isn't building around wetland, he's building up top of wetland.
That's why
I don't understand it could possibly use the same NPDS plan.
Well
That's why I was asking that very question. Could he, could he use it as it is?
It's, it technically, from the DEP and Conservation District point of view, he'll, when he takes ownership of the property, he has to transfer the existing permit
Okay.
to his name.
Okay, that, I get that part.
You get that part.
But that is not what he has.
I, I know.
Okay.
I know that there's that inconsistency between the two plans. But I'm talking about from
I get that.
Conservation District's point of view.
Yeah, got it.
So then he has two choices when he takes, transfers that permit.
Do a new plan?
He can submit a new plan, which is a major modification, which is exactly the same as a brand new plan.
Pretty much, it's hard to scratch.
Or there's two. He can complete the terms of that existing permit, even though it's inconsistent with our plan.
But it's also inconsistent with what he's doing.
I know.
Okay.
So that's, I mean, that's why we're going to work with him on that.
Is, is the Conservation District concerned if he moves forward with the current NPDS? Based upon what
I would hope so.
currently doing as a
I would hope so, but I can't speak for the
I doubt if they know.
I just don't know what the, is there a drastic difference between, I mean, I know there's, there is a drastic difference between the plan itself. But when it comes to DEP's concern
There are key, critical differences. That makes it unbuiltable and workable.
Correct. Or the current NPDS permit?
In the current NPDS permit.
Correct.
You're doing stormwater for five times the area.
Right.
Yeah, thank you, that's exactly right.
Well, that's, that's Wouldn't it be
Right.
in his best interest just to start over and have a plan designed for what its intended use is?
Yes.
Yes.
Here's the thing that they're taking ahead. If he goes for a new plan, he's gonna be out about four or five months.
At least.
That is, that is right.
And you still would have to do a notice termination on the old plan, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And that takes time.
Yeah, I think he's gonna, he's gonna fight a lot of battles on the old plan.
Nothing's been done, so it's not going to be a big deal to get that.
True, there's, there's not, there's not really anything that's been completed, so the permit can be canceled operating quickly.
And it's not, it's not even that. They're, they're gonna submit, they're gonna have to submit a major modification.
Right.
Which is exactly the same thing as a new plan.
As a new plan.
Right, he really didn't start the, he really didn't start the old plan he had prepared for.
Right, they, they didn't.
Didn't do nothing.
They didn't turn over one shovel before dark. Well, they didn't. So, that's, that's what I'm saying, it was technical terms.
Yes. Basically, the, even though the NPDS plan, the current one is still active.
Yes.
It's basically junk.
Right.
The only thing he would gain by doing that is, he'd have an active NPDS permit. But it's, it needs to be modified into a major modification.
Right.
He wouldn't have to go through the nip. Scott, it's like you were saying, it's, the difference between the filing the original and filing a major modification is not much difference.
Right.
So
Okay, as always, I would ask is as long as he understands the state of play, so he knows
Oh, he does.
You would work with him on that, welcome through the
Happy to cooperate
Yep.
as a township would. With a good, with a good buyer, but
So their warehouse
He's got a big hole to dig out, I would think.
Yep. He knows that and he was in, and he basically told me.
As he aware.
Interesting, interested in pursuing it, but that could very well make the whole project go south.
Yeah, understood.
So, is that the reason why Tam Ag pulled out?
Well, when Ed came in Saturday, he read a new description that he got from the Realtor. It doesn't mention sports complex. It says it's a storage building and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Just changed the name and still
And that he doesn't have a up-to-date septic permit. He allowed it to expire. And so that needs to be renewed. It can be renewed.
Yeah.
And then he mentions that the NPDS was, has to be completed if you transfer it. Has its own problems. So he's being upfront now with it. Because the other deal went south when they, the buyer came back to the seller and said, you know, we gotta do like a four-hundred thousand dollars worth of work before we can do anything with this place. And they were negotiating the price down. And so that's why it went south.
Millers wouldn't budge.
Yeah. So that's why they changed their song on this guy. And, you know, I mean, this guy's a low impact.
He would be better off starting a new plan than just starting over.
Well, that's his decision, right?
But it's a, it's your point, he'd be a good, it's a good business to have in that spot.
I mean, it's not a whole lot of noise, a whole lot of traffic.
And it really, I wouldn't even call manufacturing, it's assembly.
Yeah, exactly.
It's assembly with an office building.
It's basically gonna be quiet and they're gonna be going four-thirty eating and
Yep.
It'll be quiet.
Yeah, it's a good, it's a good, good business there.
Uh, that's basically that. The other item that's on the agenda is JVI.
So Go back there.
Oh, I'm sorry, Scott.
Before you leave that, is there any action for you? What are you doing with, with the, with Steinhauer right now, other than just letting him know what's approved, what isn't approved? Keeping him informed, is there anything else to be done?
We have a hearing scheduled
That's what I'm getting to.
For July the eighth.
Yep.
And it's a Monday night, I believe. And it's gonna be a conditional use hearing on doing the warehouse is considered a conditional use by our zoning ordinance. And he'll be here and make a presentation to you on what he's proposing.
To the supervisor.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, supervisors. Well, half the board's, well, almost. Hi, it's up there.
What time is that, Gus?
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, go.
And if you're interested, please come. All right?
So that's a point I wanted to get on the record, is there is a conditional use hearing scheduled. And, and it is for that use. And it does not have to go before the zoning board, because the office is
If you look under the the zoning ordinance, eleven sixty-six, I believe. Twenty-seven dash eleven sixty-six. The requirements for a warehouse, there are only three. And one of them is that it be a building and that it be in stores and that's about it.
And a small amount of office space is incidental to the
Well, that's incidental to, to the business.
But that's the only part he would be building at this point.
At this point
And he wants to add more later, he'd come back for
Exactly, he'd have to come back and do a plant, land development. Uh, the other thing is that he will use the back of the building for a loading dock. He'll have to build some docks so that trucks can back up and they can load and unload. But that's
Sure sounds like he needs to go through some more planning and design.
Oh, absolutely, but
That's, that's back issue, that
That's not
That don't hurt nothing.
No, not with this one.
Okay.
So All right, Scott, you're on. Unless someone's got some questions about
After six weeks, I'm still waiting to hear from DEP about the Greenberg, Culver. So that should come any day.
So how quickly can that get done? You know, I went back to see that this weekend. That's very concerning of a, of a cave in there. I mean, there was, there was some gravel put in, but didn't look like nearly enough to me.
It keeps going down.
Yeah. It's bigger, you know, bigger pieces instead of some of the small pieces that poured down in there.
Yeah.
Are you comfortable that we stabilize that for as long as we may have to stabilize it, given that this
I haven't seen it in a couple of months.
Okay, I'd suggest you go look at it.
Okay. I mean, after we get this permit, I just, I submit everything to Deb Musselman at the district. And then she tells me whether or not I can submit. The township can go ahead and submit
Advertise for bids.
Advertise for bids, yeah.
Okay. No, I just want to make sure that we're, we're stabilized. I, I know you can't control the timeline other than the control that you're ordering over now, but
Well, you might want to call your legislators on that, because I took a permit up to Harrisburg, to DEP. You walk in there and everyone's sitting at a desk, they're all college kids now. All the old folks are retired. And I handed him the permit and I walked back to this one lady, gave it to her. And she picked this big stack of papers off, put the new one on the bottom. I mean, and that's the way it is.
Yeah.
It's sort of unrealistic the way they're doing things, but
And their only guarantee is if it's submitted perfectly the first time.
Right, right, right. They find any errors or
Their timeline, they get guaranteed, right.
Well, Deb ought to be able to help on that now that she's the boss.
You'd think.
Okay. All right, I just asked that you take a look at that, because I'm not, I'm not comfortable with this ability of that.
Myers Down Road, still nothing new. Working on the update for the subdivision land development, Andy's here to go over that this evening. And there's, there's one outstanding plan, the Lobaw Bump Subdivision. I believe that's on the agenda for tonight.
Yep.
And for supervisors' action is required by July thirty-first. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Just moving on into old business, Gus.
Yeah, JVI is next. If you've been by
Samwell Report on Sale.
That's
Did you kind of give us that already?
We already talked about it. JVI is the next item. That's the old furniture store that's been converted into offices. They did get a permit from the state for another driveway where trucks can turn in. And they're supposed to submit a plan to me, a permit, for a permit for a three-thousand square foot garage to be built down below the furniture store. And if you go back there, you'll see that they've filled in, leveled off that lot where the cornfield was for this garage. And that driveway they're putting in would let trucks go in and pull around to that. But at this point, they told me that they were gonna be in here with the plans for the building and a land development plan. I still haven't seen anything and they can't do anything more than what they've done.
I thought they weren't even gonna be doing what they've done. I thought your deal was they don't move a shovel's worth of dirt until we see a land development plan.
That's what I told them.
But they did.
But they did. They brought in, covered up, plowed up a cornfield
Yeah.
and leveled it off.
Well, they're not showing themselves to be keeping their deal and go.
No. But I talked to a contractor called me about getting a permit and I said, well
No deal.
Call them up and tell them they gotta get in your land development plan first. And he says, oh, I'll tell them. But I haven't heard anything more from them.
Well, you gave them till the end of August, I believe.
They got till the end of August.
And this is
Almost July.
We really have, maybe two meetings make one, for us to see the plan. And for it to be right before we can recommend it to the supervisors.
That's right.
I don't like the timeframe, I never did like that.
And this is already an extension, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It was a three-month extension, by the way, we recommended a one-month extension.
Right. So whatever's there, at this point, they're still working on the office part. All right. After that, we have the Saldo revision, which I'd like to move back. Lobaw's aren't here yet.
So we'll hold off on the Saldo, move that down below, even below the new business.
Yep. And the other two things I want to mention is that I got an application for rezoning the property at 180 South Ridge Road, which is the Bany farm. I've got that scheduled for July the twenty-fifth. And that's a, a conditional use to rezone that property from agricultural to commercial and industrial. And it abuts. It's abutted on the north side by the CI district. So that's a legal rezoning.
Well, if the, it's not mandatory, though. These, these rezonings, just because it's commercial abutted, doesn't mean that we nor the supervisors have to recommend they get.
Right. That's, he's gotta make a presentation to the supervisors.
Correct.
It's not automatic.
Right.
But it's not spot zoning because
No, no, I get that part, that's good news, yeah.
It's an expansion of a, of a current zone.
So is this conditional use with the supervisors or the zoning?
Supervisors.
Correct.
They're the only ones that have been rezoned.
And I think we need your input on that.
Okay.
But didn't
Well, is it, is it a conditional use application or is it a request for a rezoning?
It's a request for a rezoning.
Yeah. Gus mixed those two together. And then there'll be conditional use issues, among other things. Because they want to put an auction in there as well as what, baseball fields?
Yeah, a couple of baseball fields.
So this is not a conditional use
One A
No, Roxy, it is, it is a change of zone.
Request for rezoning
Rezoning, yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Before the supervisors, not the zoning board.
Right.
Correct.
Does it go to the zoning board then?
No.
No.
I guess it would depend on what you still put in on there.
The zoning board
That's, eventually it could.
The first TAM application because the building was too close to the river.
For main
That was canceled.
Yeah.
Okay. But then we have this zoning with the new possible buyer.
And that goes from ag to commercial, industrial, then fruit, correct?
Yeah, wait.
This is mixed, this is mixing properties.
Yeah, I'm going back to Samwell now.
How are you doing that?
That, why? Because I have it as a conditional use hearing, is that what it is?
Yes, to use the warehouse as a warehouse.
That's not the hearing for Culver.
I know, but I'm going back to make sure I have it right.
Okay, all right. All right.
July 8th, right?
Yes.
July 8th.
So that's a conditional use hearing to.
Yeah, this, this is a totally different property.
Right, right. I understand all that.
She's getting it squared.
Because he said conditional use for what we're talking about now, I got confused.
Which is not.
Correct.
Yeah.
Gus, Jay Weaver's the, he's the owner.
Yeah. Okay, so Paul, you said something. You would like us to weigh in on.
Yes.
On the zoning.
Yes.
Then he should come and present us what he plans on doing with that property.
Can you hear him? Hear from the next meeting?
All right.
At least a sketch.
Yeah.
We need at least a sketch.
Summatized sketch plan, yeah.
Is the next plan commission meeting before?
It's after the zoning.
That's when resuming? Is that scheduled?
July 25th.
Yeah, July 1.
Oh, that was.
When's when the next meeting?
July 22nd.
22nd. I thought it was tomorrow night. God, come on.
We're okay by three days.
So we're okay by three days.
July 25th, he said.
That's probably, that's probably okay. You're, are you okay?
Yeah.
I'm okay.
And is that 7:00?
Yeah.
Yeah. Then we can make our recommendation or questions, whatever.
So Jay needs to be here at our meeting.
Okay. And that's, that's good, that's good protocol.
Can you give me the address again?
180 South Ridge Road.
And you said July 25th.
Mm-hmm.
Some of you.
All right, and our next meeting's on the 22nd.
So is this, are they just presenting or they actually submit requests, this is an advertised hearing of supervisors?
On the 25th, it's a hearing before the supervisors, I see.
So technically, if it's an advertised hearing for the zoning amendment, then it should come to our office to review.
I'll get it to you.
Correct. And so, yeah. There was something else I was thinking that needed to go to your office.
What?
Seems like that's a little close.
Was close. I'm sorry about that, but.
It just seemed like a little tight.
Well, that's a fair point.
Yeah, if we come up with any issues, you're out. You're going to have three days between meetings, between the hearing.
Addressing. And you, what's your schedule like?
Uh, if, 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 just he sent it to me tomorrow, we'll be good.
Okay. All right.
Now, keep in mind, there's, just because you're holding a hearing, it's not obligated for the supervisors to act.
Correct.
That's right.
At that hearing.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So, you know, they, they're, that's.
There may be enough issues that they choose not to.
Correct.
So, because you'll have your comments, county comments. And it is tough. County comments will get back. We'll have a chance to see county comments before our meeting. And then we'll have our own comments.
Mm-hmm.
So then the supervisors have everything, basically everything they need to make your.
Yep.
On the 25th, yeah.
Right.
Yeah. If I were him, I wouldn't schedule that on the 25th. I wouldn't, if I were the property owner, because there's enough things that could jump the tracks that I wouldn't want, if I were him, to hold the hearing where his request was not fulfilled. That's.
Can he ask for continuance of the hearing?
Yeah.
Sure he can, but the, that date was chosen by the board of supervisors.
Right.
Okay.
So.
Well, they now have new information.
No. The first meeting is always informational anyway.
But a hearing is. Anyway, okay, I've said enough. All right.
Is that reset on that? What's?
Anything else we need to know?
No, I'm not in on that.
Because I feel like we don't know very much about that. And I know part of that, he's going to educate us on the next meeting.
Yeah.
But he wants two different uses. One will fall under the sports complex code and one will fall under the auction code. He wants to do both of those under the same.
On the same property.
On the same property. We want that in the same conditional use hearing eventually? I don't think that's a good idea either. I think those should be split. And if he, if that's a requirement, that he has to have both of those businesses or he doesn't want to do this, we need to know that.
That's his decision.
We, we.
If we turn him down, then he's got to live with that.
I know. But I'm trying to be fair to him and us and county in getting all this done in a short period of time.
Let's see where it goes.
All right. I keep saying I've said enough. Now I'm really saying. Yeah.
All right, the other.
What's this low-cost housing, Gus?
Well, you guys ever read the PSESS magazine? Well, is housing a problem? Do you feel we have enough low-cost housing in the township?
All of York Springs is looking.
Well.
There's a lot in this, this part of the county.
There's a lot going on under low-cost. There's federal money that you can get to build things.
Yes.
A development. And a lot of communities don't allow low-cost housing come in and that kind of thing. You can't build a townhouse development in our township unless you have city water and sewer.
Yeah, for sewers.
Right, and we don't have that. And if you did it on-site, you'd have to put septic systems and wells in and so on. And that just makes it impractical because you've kicked the price up approximately $30,000. But our legislature, who is being criticized for not having more affordable housing, claims that what they want to do is, they're collecting information right now. They want to do a statewide zoning ordinance to allow by right multifamily housing in commercial and developments zoned for single-family homes. I think the legislature wants to solve a problem that they don't have a real answer to. So again, it's time for us to write our legislators and tell them to get their heads out of there. Well, whatever.
Andy, do you want to comment on?
I, yeah, I can add a little complex because we researched this a little bit. There's a couple, there's a whole package of bills in the legislature. Most of them are in the House. I think there's one that's in the Senate. The most, the one that Gus is referring to specifically is House Bill 2045. That would, that essentially were. If you were ever, I don't know if you've heard, talked nationally about their municipalities are eliminating single-family zoning. They're not eliminating single-family zoning. What they're, what they're doing is they're requiring any district that allows for single-family housing. Housing has to allow for all types of dwellings, not just single-family. Minneapolis has done that. Some states have done that. That's been done statewide, statewide level. It's some, what that House bill is, is something similar. Although it's, as with most, what bills in the legislature are written, are poorly written because they're written, written by the people that they hired, eventually hired staffers that aren't familiar with the laws that they're writing bills to amend. That one would, would require, for I think it's any municipality over five, a population of 5,000, would have to permit any pro, any residentially zoned property. Or no, any property that allows residential uses on it must allow every type of housing. So that, that means that, well, it's not written by zoning districts, it's written by parcel, which is again a significant drafting error by somebody that doesn't know the difference between the zoning district and a parcel. So you look in the ag district, but that traditionally allows a single-family house as a use. This bill would require that you allow all, you know, duplexes, townhouses, whatever, on there. There's other variations of that bill. There's another one that, that talks about conversion of malls and commercial sites into residential and a whole host of things, things like that. It's being driven by legislators in the Lehigh Valley, Philly suburbs, Berks County area. We were, we've been told, because we've looked into, we were told that one of them, I think 2045 is the one that's more likely to, if any of them advance, that's the one that's more likely to, mostly because one of the sponsors, the chair of one House committee that it needs to get out of. It's unlikely that it gets through the Senate. It might get through the House, certainly because they make it through the House. It is, it's trying to address an issue. And there is, there is, there is an issue. There is a, I don't think that's the best way to go about doing it, most efficient way to go about doing it. But, you know, is the question of whether, you know, is more housing needed and where to put it is a. They're attempting to solve a local issue with a statewide happen.
Yeah.
And that doesn't always work. And the legislature apparently hasn't learned its lesson yet that every time they try to address a, a land, dictate land use law to the municipalities, they get slapped down by the state Supreme Court that they don't have the power to do that. They backed the Marcellus gas wells and a couple other, other things more recently, so. It's, it's something that's being monitored. Now, I don't, I, there's only a select few municipalities in Adams County that it will apply to at that threshold that goes through as it's currently drafted. Obviously, if they, they remove the population threshold and whatnot, that, that could, could change things.
So there is a population threshold in it now?
That, that was five, it's 5,000. But again, it's, it's just a very poorly written bill that's, that's, that's sitting out there. Some of, a lot of these bills get introduced to, it's performative more than it is legislative, legislating. They're trying, they're putting something out there to make a point and, you know, about an issue. You know, and the danger, of course, is that, is that it's something for the draft to get, get actually adopted and signed. So, all right, I can, I can say we, our state, our local legislators are aware of it and at least aware of our concerns we have professionally. But that's, that's different issue from, from are there housing issues in the county?
Yeah.
There, there, there are. And I would say that the Warner at the Lawrence Development in the county is starting to significantly skew the comparable sales numbers in the, in the county.
Yeah.
I, I, we, we've been doing some data crunching of the report reacts, annual, annual sales data. And if you do the math, there, there's a pretty significant difference between the sales price of new construction and the, you know, existing units that are changing owners. And a lot of that's being driven by one specific development, which had the last house and they go for, I think, 1.2 million for something that's, that's not significantly different than where I live, so. And quite frankly, it might not be built as well.
Yeah.
So, so, you know, that's, that, that is a separate issue. There, there's an issue of rental units. There's been a, been a decades-long issue of, issue of black apartments, townhouses and multifamily units all around Adams County.
Even the ones that are in existence are too expensive. But it's being driven by the cost of acquiring said units because of interest rates and inflation. You're not going to purchase a property and not be able to make money off of it.
And regulations won't.
I will say, so there is an apartment project that's been approved and is under construction. And getting, and we're all over the place, and getting it's right there in SGI.
Yes.
270, some, but again, that's going to be, that's going to be market rate. And you're talking like a buck, 25, buck 50 square foot rent, inter rental rates. Because that's what, that's what they quoted, quoted us at that township a couple of years ago.
And some significant part of that, of those won't work, that's why.
Uh, in that location, no problem.
Yeah, we're building, we're building units for Maryland.
Understand that, understand that of the working population of the county, that resides in the county, two-thirds drive, commute to employment outside of county.
Yeah. And while that's outside Pennsylvania?
Uh, yeah, so.
Yeah, Maryland, Virginia.
Maryland, Virginia.
Yeah, we're coming.
Gus does it right. It's, it's, PSESS is, is, they're, they're doing some of their due diligence and then their, their legislature, they're aware of that legislation and potential impact it would have on townships.
The economics needs to be fixed, not the zoning.
I, I, well, I've been to more township meetings than zoning meetings, I'd probably care to admit. But if the, I would, would say one of the biggest complaint, one of the biggest opposition reasons we usually see the housing is that we can't, we can't afford to, to the school taxes for those households. You know, and that, one of the biggest drivers opposed of increasing housing is that issue. If that, if that funding issue was resolved differently, you would likely see the housing market, this development market shift. If that, if that wasn't the case, at least maybe that made you the pros and cons of it in terms of is it accepted or not, it's slightly different.
Fair.
That's not going to be fixed as long, as long as the only area in the state that cares that sees this issue is the DOW from Chambersburg to Philly, to Scranton.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks for keeping us posted on it.
That's it, so we're up to doing the Saldo River.
What about business?
Business.
The business definition.
Oh, yes.
On this agenda and not.
Yes.
On that agenda.
Yeah, there's an item on there. If you look under the CI District, which is under 27, 803 and 4, that's a commercial district. We have something called a business in that district. And so that could be monkey business or a little business or. But Todd wrote us a note saying that we shouldn't have it under. As business, that's almost a generic.
It is a generic.
Yep.
We should have something specific. So the idea is, unless someone's got a better idea, is to take that category out of that.
Can I give a little more background on that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So Todd, Todd was looking at conditional uses for the buyers of, of the, of the property on Whitechase. And also this, on the buyer's potential, not buyers, but uses of this property on, that we're talking about for auction. And he, he discovered this that, and wrote a letter to you and the supervisors that this is too broad because we have businesses defined and then we put in business. So it's a, it could be abused or make, or make our life miserable anyway. But because somebody could say, I got a business. I want to get a conditional use or I want to get land, whatever it is. Just, just make it harder because. because it fits in this category of business when we've defined all the other businesses. And we have code sections for the other businesses, at least as we thought of when we did the definitions and review. So Todd's advice, and I agree with it, was that we take the broad word business out because we've defined all the other businesses. That does require a change to the code. It does require notification to county. County needs 30 days to look at it. I don't think county has any problem that they've got to look at it. And, uh, and it requires a hearing to make the change. But I believe, what are you asking of us tonight? That we've, that, understanding the issue, that we, we in the planning commission, because the planning commission also has to be informed and make a decision to recommend to the supervisors to move forward with what I just said, which involves you guys understanding it and the supervisors notifying county, which you can, you can do without. You can do that. If we say, this is a good idea tonight, if we have a motion to proceed as I outlined, then you can notify county and get the clock running at county as well, because we don't want to get ahead of county. Did I say that okay?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the background.
Roxy, you got that?
Sure. Todd suggests we remove it.
Well.
Yeah, a motion to remove it.
We have to have a, you guys want to recommend that to the supervisors?
You're saying item nine, business.
Yeah, exactly. Just take, strike that, because we defined all the businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
What definition of business?
Well, the definition of business is okay. It's having it as an, as an approved use. That's the, that's the problem. Our definition's fine. It's, it's just, we just throw it in as an approved use. It's not fine, because it gets, it's a catch-all, but we don't want to catch-all.
Yep.
So I just wanted to, any other questions? I'm happy to start the motion process. Another question. Okay, I would make a motion that we recommend to the supervisors to make that change in the code to remove item nine business for the reasons I already said.
Oh, section 27803.
Yeah, I have a section 27803.
Motion was made, but Tom seconded it. Ron, is there any questions in that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Okay, so you can start the clock at county, Gus.
Okay. Who was the second on that?
Ron.
Ron.
Ron, okay. Thank you for that.
Okay, we're down to.
Can I make a request that, that the, the agenda that's up on the board is the agenda we're working off of as well?
Right.
You left one off. See what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, I did.
Yeah, okay. So the officia, the official agenda is the one that you published and is in front of us, but you made a mistake on that.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, we're back to, that's the end of new business unless there's something else.
Yeah, that's it.
Go back to old business. We have the lowball subdivision in Saldo.
No, no one here represented.
Right.
That's too bad. What, what's going on? He loses them all.
Well, they're, they had two problems with their, that plan. Number one was that they had to get all their three principals and they all had to go to notary and get it signed.
Okay.
That was one. Number two was the fact that they need a non-building waiver and the SEO said that there's a pipe.
That, that same pipe that we've been hearing about for three months.
And the plumber says that it's a vent pipe, not a drain.
Right.
So they gotta put it up properly.
Okay.
And the SEO told me if he, when he inspects it and sees it up, he'll sign off.
Okay. So it's their, their delay. I always feel bad that it's taking months to get something done that should have been done three months ago and four months ago.
Well.
It isn't our fault.
July the 1st, or 31st.
We need a.
So do we need to table that?
I was gonna say, do we have a motion to table? I want to entertain a motion to table the lowball subdivision.
I'll second.
Nobody made it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Jeff made the motion.
I'll second it.
Second with Kyle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, so moved. All right.